Good evening and welcome to tonight's Board of Selectmen meeting. Today is Tuesday, July 23rd, time being 6:30 PM. I would call the meeting to order. We are meeting this evening in the Harry Butter Selectmen's Chamber here at Norwood Town Hall, 566 Washington Street. And CM, Norwood Community Media is also here making a recording for broadcast purposes. Before we begin tonight's meeting, as is our tradition, we will begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silent reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this evening, we have no public hearings. We do have an appointment at 6:35 and a number of other items for our consideration and deliberation in votes. Before we begin our 6:35 appointment, maybe we can dispense with a couple of normal points of business. Item number one, warrant signature update. Submitting notification of reviewed and approved warrant reports signed by the board's representatives. These are warrants signed for 7/5/2024 and the warrant letter of 7/10/24. Pleasure of the board?
I'll accept it if you fly.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Carried five, nothing. Meeting minutes is the second item. Meeting minutes for approval of the board submitting. Meeting minutes for July 9th, 2024. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and seconded?
I abstain since I wasn't present myself.
Okay.
I will abstain as well, Mr. Chairman.
All right. We have two abstentions, all in favor, all opposed.
Aye.
Three to nothing with two abstentions.
I did watch replays. Excellent.
Yes. It was almost recatane. See how much we can get done when you guys aren't here.
I know.
I've always said eliminate even one, doesn't it? Doesn't matter which one. Just happens.
Before we begin our 6:35 appointment, why don't we deal with one more item? This is under new business, 4.1 Mortgage Lean Discharge for 36 Bornwood Drive, 15 Chapel Street, and 15 Allendale Parkway. This is for signature of the board. Before I ask for a motion, anything to add on this, Mr. Mizuka?
No, Mr. Chairman. The town has done community development block grant housing programs in the past, and when we do, a lien is recorded on a home. These are all loans, projects that the town has done where the 15-year period has expired. The board has to file some paper over the registry so that people are able to, if they wanted to sell their property or take out a mortgage, they're able to, and there's no more encumbrances from us on at the 15-year period having expired.
Thank you, Mr. Mizuka. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion seconded.
Seconded, Mr. Delane. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Carried five, nothing. Very well. Well, we're pretty close to 6:35. Why don't you come on in? Parade your way in.
We invited a parade.
There we go. We are, this evening, this only appointment for this evening is a appointment for 6:35 PM with the Fourth of July Committee. Welcome. Wait for the committee to get seated.
Oh, was it the?
Very well. So seems like it wasn't that long ago when you were here, but I'm going to ask for quick introductions and then we'll proceed with the discussion.
Lou Harris with the Amateur Area Group and Chief Cook and Bottle Washer.
Maria Henry.
Michael Verzey.
Karen Rodger.
All right. Well, welcome. Welcome. Seems like it wasn't that long ago you were here telling us about the parade.
I know.
Yeah.
It went off.
How did it go?
I think it went great.
Well, I think some of you can tell us better how it went than we can tell you because we can only tell you the backstory of how we got it to go, not how it went. From our end, even given the challenges that we had with staging, I think we were able to make it function as well as we could, and I think we were able to provide a good parade for the group. I hope that that came across that way. I know a couple of you were in it, and I hope you enjoyed yourselves.
Yeah. I think it went very well. Other years, you have a lot of breaks, and we're trying to get rid of the breaks in the parade. This year, we did get rid of them. You know, there's one break you can never get rid of, and that's when the fire trucks leave and the parade starts. There will always be that break, and nothing we can do about it because they need to go and the other people need to stop. But after that, I thought it was great, the parade. You know, my negative opinion on it was it was a little too fast. So we had asked them not to perform full songs in front of the review stand because that tends to hold up the parade. So we asked them to, like, perform a little bit. So they did. A lot of, some of them did enough, but some of them, like, barely stopped. So, I mean, we got to tweak it a little. Next year, I'm going to say perform a little more, but I thought it was great. I thought our bands were great. Thought the road race went off well. You know, that one, we were behind the eight ball, and we put it together, and that went off well. And the children's parade was great. So I don't know what your feedback was on it, but it seems people really enjoyed it.
Go ahead. Any comments from the, anybody else from the committee would like to comment on the parade? We'll open it up for discussion. Yes, Martha.
Well, I want to thank all of the members of the committee. Quite a few years, they're wonderful people to work with, very, very dedicated to the parade, give them their time. And I think it's an honor to be on the committee because we actually bring the Fourth of July to Norwood and bring them to all these families who drive by, second story, third story, people on their porch, just in the back, with a little shoulder, people with little tears. So we help the Norwood celebrate. Thank you.
I'll open it up for comments and questions from the board. Mr. Sad.
I want to thank each and every one of you. Great parade. It was unbelievable walking with Ms. Crowe and the other people with us going back and forth, and people were going crazy. It was just a great day, and I remember when I ran it, my first budget from John Carroll was $2,000. So you guys did a great job. Should be all proud of it, and I can't wait for next year.
Mr. Delane.
Thank you. Unfortunately, I was out of town, but I'm sure it was excellent and what Mr. Sad said holds true, and thank you for all the work that you put in. It's really appreciated.
Thank you.
Mr. Plasko.
Well, I likewise unfortunately missed this year's entirely, even as a spectator, but it was pretty good, and that's what you want feedback on and you want to hear. I hear one negative, always hear negatives, but the majority has been quite positive, receptive. People still like it. I said to somebody, "Well, maybe we'll do something different, maybe we'll have a big town fear instead of a parade." "What, are you crazy? We get to away with the parade." So keep doing what you're doing, and thank you for your help.
So what was the negative, just so we can know? Anything?
It was a really general. They just didn't like it, didn't think there was as many bands, you know, they never made the complaint to me specific. It was kind of out there in a real general way.
Give us a name. Give us a name.
I'll write it down for you. You can question it.
You think of it, we had, like, the most bands we've had, I think we had 12 or 13 big, you know, bands, and you know...
Yeah, we had quite a few small ones, too.
The budget, I mean, is, I think it cost us almost $40,000 for the bands. I mean, it's expensive, and so we really worked...
We did the best we could with what we had.
Yeah. And we really, you know, thanked you guys, and we thanked everyone that donated, but every band, like, the ones that come from New York, they were astronomical because they said, "Do you know what it is to rent the buses to bring the kids here? It's thousands of dollars. So if we want them, we have to..." So that's why we only allow us, we only do one or two expensive bands, and then a lot of the other ones are all through the towns that have done them for years.
Yeah.
Right to say, if you can only do so much with so much.
Yeah.
As long as what we do is quality, we don't even need to worry about quantity, and that's what I think people do appreciate.
Yeah, I got a lot of positive, there are more positives this year than I ever have. People coming up and saying, "We just love this. We love the fact that we don't have to go away. We can stay in Norwood. We have all this fun. We go to Walpole the night before," and so many people came up and thanked us for doing it so that they don't have to go away on the fourth. You know, so that felt good. I, of course, have never had, I want to bring something new next year, so that's my new thing. I'm trying to think of a new thing to bring in. You know, we have the children's parade, we have the road race, we have the parade. I want to do something in the middle there. I don't know. So I'm thinking, try to make it...
Maybe we have the fair.
Don't run out your volunteer.
I know. We need more of them.
We always need more of them.
Thank you. Ms. Crowe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I also want to congratulate you on the parade. So I got the upfront view of it from marching up the front, and as best I can tell from the years that I've been in the parades, you know, attendance seemed solid to me. Lots of people, you know, up in their balconies, lots of people on their lawns, lots of people lined up. Even, you know, through the mist and that sort of early drizzle, it seemed pretty well attended, and everyone was having fun. And then all of the performers and the various participants, you know, had really great presentations and floats, and it seemed really fun and good, so I really enjoyed it, and I was glad to be able to march in it again. Looking forward to next year already, but I really appreciate all the homework, especially with the staging. You know, the staging was such a challenge this year. You know, all the normal places, you're like, "Well, what if we would just go here?" Nope, can't go there either. So I thought that you did an excellent job of still making that staging area work, and it still seemed very orderly, and everything got off and running, so very good job.
That was a huge challenge this year. And I can't thank the police and the people that run the space center and that whole area and Nukar and Bock for all of their support. They both, everybody supplied something that helped us out, whether it was a parking area or a staging area, or simply just the ability to use the street. And it worked out a lot better than it looked like it was going to on paper, and I think we did all right. So next year, we'll do better, so.
That's great work.
Yeah. Thank you.
So I unfortunately was out of town as well at a family event, but I want to thank you, and I want to thank you particularly for noting the contributions for the police and the DPW and other folks in the town side who were there in their capacity to assist the parade from beginning to end, which is great. I noticed Mrs. Culmarie is wearing the Grand Marshall T-shirt.
I'm taking the Dawson's award.
There you go. Yeah, all right. Yeah, yeah. Well, Martha is with us on the concerts every Wednesday and Sunday evenings at our table, still selling those T-shirts with Mustang Sally and Chief Brooks on there, and we'll continue to do that, but we really appreciate all your work. It's not an easy thing to do, to run a 40,000-plus event, so you should be admired for that. And on behalf of the town, I thank each and every one of you. On with it, let's start preparing for next year, I guess, right?
Yeah.
We already are.
Ms. Crowe.
One other small thing before you go, just for the public at home who are tuning in. If people want to help and volunteer and get involved, how can they reach out to you?
So what you could do is call the town and leave a message with Mike Rosen, and he'll get it to me.
Excellent.
Or, yeah, he'll get, depending on what they want to help with. But that's the best way to siphon.
Yeah.
And we're looking for the help, so any young person or older person out there that has some ideas or wants to get involved, feel free to call.
Yeah, we start preparing in earnest around November, so that's, people don't realize how much work goes into getting the event going. By the middle of January, we're at full steam.
Yeah.
And I'd also, Mr. Rosen, I'd like to think we thank you for your representing the town manager's office for this committee, this event, as well as all the work you do for many of the civic engagements and celebrations in the town, including the concert committee, so personally, I want to thank you for that as well.
Mike's awesome. He is, he's like the best.
That's nice of you.
You really are. I've never seen anyone as organized and up, he's just amazing.
I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Tony heard it, too.
You got a good...
One more thing. Mike does a great job. I was going to say the same thing, but two things. Ms. Crowe and I had a little issue on the, in front of the restaurant here. You might want to just say where the ending date is. Not ending date, ending spot. There was some little controversy up front with Ms. Crowe and I, but it all worked out great. I know it's a hard job, and I love it and did it my heart.
In the old days, it ended at Shaw's, so.
Yeah.
Anywhere before there is an early ending, to be honest.
So we kind of say it ends at the civic, is what, the way we usually say now. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we saw a couple of folks that had sort of camped out at Bridge, I think expecting folks to go to the Shaw, not realizing. So, and I don't mind going to Shaw's personally, because I often just keep on walking.
You remind everybody that ends at the civic.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that's the kind of thing that tradition has always been, so that's where I'm going to be. Why didn't anybody show up? Yeah. Oh, well.
Not a lot of time, just a few.
Well, thank you again.
Thank you.
Good for seeing you back here again in less than a year's time.
Yeah, and we'll see you soon.
Thank you for having me. Great job, everybody.
Continuing on with the agenda, we now are looking at 4.2. The Norwood Recreation Department for acceptance by the board of donation from the Norwood Stingrays Swim Team. Mr. Mizuka, anything to add on this item?
No, Mr. Chairman. We previously operated the youth swim team, and it's kind of gone out of the civic and back in, as tends to happen sometimes with our programs. This would be us taking it back in. The Stingrays wanted to make sure that the money they had in their kitty, so to speak, went to help offset costs for the first year, so we would accept it as a donation that would go towards offsetting those costs, and we would continue to charge for the program as we, as they have in the past and as we have in the past, and it would run through the revolving fund.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Plasko.
Yeah. If we're going to do this, I certainly have no problem with accepting the check, but thanks, but I had a little problem with reading this letter where it says, "We are taking its role," and it's the first I've heard of it. Seems to me when we're taking over a program, thinking of starting new programs, we should be talking about, we should know what's involved, we should know how much time it's going to take, how much money the potential total budget is. We have budget problems, if we want to be taking on more. We had those kind of discussions and heads up, if you will, that we were talking about doing that with the school department, taking over the after-school program, but we had a lot of discussion with that, and I know there was, it's probably a more involved transfer of authority and work, and that's probably why there was more discussion and planning, but the same principle, I think, should apply in almost anything we do. We're taking on something new. I don't think department heads, even the general manager should be doing it alone. I think we should know and have a heads up of what we're doing and making sure we're behind doing it. In this case, we've had the Stingrays, we've had them before, I should probably get the answer before I make the general statement, sure the budget isn't going to be a budget buster, but in principle, I'd like to have that stuff in advance before I just start with doing something.
Sure.
Just as commentary.
Okay.
And if you want to move for motions, they get discussion going, make a motion that we accept the donation of the Chapter 4453A for the indicated purposes.
Could I also ask for a motion to also, along with that, Mr. Plasko, to also deposit that donation into the Recreation Department revolving account?
Just technically, we don't, I guess I thought I made it clear to myself, but we don't deposit money into revolving accounts. So in this case, and Mr. Plasko's point, your point is well taken, it's a relatively small program, similar to if we took over another program that has a couple thousand dollars a year budget, so it's not, nothing like the level of extended day. We can't appropriate it into revolving funds. What we can do is accept the donation from an outside agency to cover costs for this program, so once that first amount of money has been used, they'll be paying for swim lessons, everything like they normally will, that goes in the revolving fund, and then it continues to be a wash, but we don't appropriate it into the revolving fund. I know it sounds minute, but that's just...
It's going to end up there anyways.
Yeah, and by...
Yes, for all intents and purposes, yes.
By accepting it as a 4453A for the intended purpose, they can't go spend it on something else?
Got it. On Mr. Plasko's motion to accept the donation?
Second.
Mr. Sad, seconded. Any further discussion?
Just to Mr. Plasko, it might be good just to get a memo at some point, sort of with an outline of maybe some of the numbers that you're asking for, and like, I don't think it's going to be, you know, a 10-page document, but it would be good to have.
Sure.
You know, it's a good point, Mr. Delane. It might also be an opportunity for Rec Department update, because I don't think we've seen Mr. Kenny here in a while.
It would be scheduled for September. We typically haven't had department heads in in the summer.
Okay.
Yeah, summer is pretty busy for this.
Yeah, the summer's also, for that department in particular, they have a couple of things going on.
Past, we'll get past Norwood Day. Because the worst thing you want to do for the Rec Department is have them in here before Norwood Day for a meeting. So with that, that would be great. I think that's an opportunity to revisit the issue that Mr. Delane and Mr. Plasko were addressing. So it's been, Mr. Plasko made the motion, Mr. Delane or Mr. Sad seconded?
We'll say Mr. Sad.
Mr. Sad seconded. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All opposed? No? Carried five, nothing. On to 4.3. Alternate election workers, this is from Mary Loufo, a Norwood Town Clerk, for consideration and approval of the board. Submitting a list of alternate election workers in accordance with Chapter 431 of the Acts of 1960 to be used if someone is unable to work on the day of the election. Do I have a motion? Ms. Crowe makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Plasko, seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It carried five, nothing. 4.4. This is the warrant for the primary election for signature of the board. May I have a motion?
Motion to sign.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on 4.4? Seeing none, we'll proceed to revoke. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? unanimous. 4.5. Town meeting warrant requests from the FinCom for discussion. So we have, everybody's seen the letter, the, let me just summarize briefly, the letter from the chair of the FinCom is for our consideration, placing on the warrant for the special town meeting in October, in an article to add money to the general purpose stabilization account. The reason, the rationale is listed here, we can talk about that in a moment. The second request is an article to establish a capital projects reserve fund, and third, if it needs to be separate, an article to fund the newly capital projects reserve fund. Mr. Mizuka, shall I turn to you first for any discussion that you may have had with Mr. O'Neill or with the FinCom regarding these requests?
Sure. I think on the first one, in terms of making sure we move $2 million through the appropriate process into stabilization, I think that makes sense. We had originally committed with the sale of Forbes' money to place $6 million, put $6 million aside for open space acquisition, and put $4 million into stabilization between override stabilization and regular stabilization. The mechanism by which we have to do that, because money from sale of property proceeds has to be to effectively use some of it for capital spending and then transfer money we would otherwise spend on capital to one of these funds, at least as the most straightforward path. So what we would do this year is, I think the capital plan as projected calls for a little over $7 million in free cash. We would actually do what we did last year, use $2 million of Forbes' proceeds, use $2 million less of free cash, but instead transfer $2 million of free cash into the general operating stabilization fund. That would bring the stabilization fund up north of $10 million. We will exceed our comparatively low target that we have in our financial policies, which would be a good thing, and we're slowly but surely moving towards the sort of mythical goal of 10% of our annual operating budget. We're not there yet, but 10 years ago, stabilization was around $3 million, so we're making good progress, and we have been making good, consistent progress in stabilization. That I would highly recommend, and we'll make sure that that happens. The second suggestion or recommendation regarding a capital projects stabilization fund is a good one. It probably needs a little bit more thought, only because if you look at a couple of things, one, what we actually have for capital projects out over the next couple of years, what we reasonably know we're going to spend. We also don't want to say, "Well, just throw $3 million in the bank for future capital projects," without an idea of, "Well, where's that going? Because next year, this time, we're going to have a list of capital projects, and the year after that, we're going to have a list of capital projects." So if our goal is to just hold it for a little while, we don't have to spend free cash. It doesn't disappear. I know when we do our municipal finance training, I say it dies on June 30th and it goes away. It really doesn't. If we don't spend it, it will be there the following year. So we can hold the money in free cash, which maximizes your flexibility. If we wanted to identify some projects, I think it would be a good idea to say, "Hey, in the next couple of years, we know," for instance, I mean, this year, there's an engine on the capitalist. We know that years ago, we bought two engines in roughly the same year, and it would come back to bite us in the butt, and that's going to come back to bite us in the butt in the next couple of years. In the next five years of the plan, there's $5 million almost worth of fire engine equipment that we need. Those are known needs that we will be replacing that equipment. It might make sense to say, "Well, it'd be great to put it aside for a future town hall project, or put money aside for a future eventual new civic center. That looks good, but we know we're going to have to buy the engines." That would be my recommendation. I just think it needs a little bit more thought as to what we're going to actually use it for, but I do highly recommend we put some money aside going into future years. Again, the goal, the more you can preserve your free cash in future years, too, you're enhancing your flexibility.
Why don't we talk about these one at a time? So in regards to the first one, the transfer stabilization fund, I believe that Ms. Bodenhofer is correct that initially, town meeting did vote to use the sale of $2 million of the proceeds from the Forbes estate to the stabilization fund. That was just, that ran counter to a DOR...
Correct.
...order, if you will. So that never occurred, so I understand that. Before I say anything more about that particular item, is there any more discussion about item number one? We're not voting on these tonight. This is not our night to vote on the warrant. I believe we have it scheduled for...
There's plenty of time.
September. Yeah. So on number one, the suggestion for a general purpose of $2 million to go into that stabilization fund. Any other commentary?
Just to reiterate what you and the manager said, that's what we already had planned. It's just having to do, jump through some hurdles to keep the DUR satisfied with how it's done.
Yep. It's always good, you know, the stabilization fund has really, there was a time when I first joined the FinCom, I believe, that we were not at the policy level at stabilization fund because we used a substantial amount of that fund to help finance the DPW building, but over the last few years, we've been able to put more money into that fund to get it up to the policy level. I think anything north of the policy level is good, good for the town. Good for the town.
And this, this was our, our plan of what to do with the Forbes money. This isn't a new proposal, because when it went to town meeting and was voted to do, this has been pointed out, uh, we brought it to town meeting.
Correct.
You know, all the selectmen, FinCom, everybody decided this is what's recommended, and town meeting accepted it. Again, it's just a DOR, had other ideas how to handle it.
Yeah, as we've always said, it is, um, it is not common that towns sell a piece of property with a significant surplus, and without the intention of buying another piece of property. Sometimes towns will sell one property for redevelopment as part of a, a different project. So, um, DOR was clear that we had to do it a certain way. They were also clear the laws were not written for how Norwood was able to pull this one off. Which, just as a reminder, we netted close to ten million dollars from the sale. So the town did very well. We're just being conservative with how we're utilizing the money, and we're restricted. The reason we're doing this mechanism is that money can only be used to purchase property or for capital expenses.
Right. And, and general stabilization fund, putting money into it is usually always a good thing. And from a, from a credit rating perspective, it's, it's something that the rating agencies will look positively on as well. So I think that's good. Any other, uh, comments about, um, the suggested article for the general purpose, uh, two million dollars to go, free cash to go into the stabilization fund? On number two, this is the capital reserve fund. Is there any, any comments from the board about the reserve fund concept? Mr. Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Mizuko, does this give us more, any kind of more enhanced flexibility? And if, if we have this money set aside for, for capital, and say, we know, you know, in three years we need a fire truck, but does it allow us to make a purchase sooner?
No, so it doesn't- It actually, it limits your flexibility, and sometimes that's by design. So because of our unique finance laws in Massachusetts, we-
That's very diplomatic way of saying that.
We have to put money into a special purpose stabilization fund.
Right.
That can only come out by vote of town meeting, um, usually requiring two-thirds to take money out of that special, uh, special purpose stabilization fund to spend it on what we want. To the extent where, your example, if we wanna buy a fire engine, so we say we put two million dollars in a special purpose, special purpose capital stabilization fund for a fire engine, we still need to go back and get a vote to come it out. That's different than appropriating it, where if we said, okay, well, we wanna appropriate this now with the idea that this is when the purchases would be made, et cetera. So it limits your flexibility. We would only wanna put money into a special purpose fund if we're intending to spend it on that purpose. If you leave it in free cash, you always have some flexibility if something else, um, comes up.
So it's almost like it gives a, it doesn't make us more flexible, but it's designated for something that we know.
Correct. So if we wanted to say, look at the, let's say the free cash number is twenty million dollars, I'm making that number up, and we're gonna use five on capital, five on the budget, and we wanna put five away for other projects. We don't have to put it away, but we might wanna say, well, we have money now, we are not gonna have the same level of free cash in the next couple of years, so let's put it aside for either a large project like town hall, or for known future capital projects. We do wanna do town hall at some point. I can be, almost assert, assure you, unless the economy stays exactly as it is, and we keep making millions on interest, and keep doing five, six, seven million dollars in building permits a year, which is unlikely, um, our free cash number will come back down to where historically has been, probably that three, four, five million dollar a year. If town hall's a twenty million dollar project, we're gonna need a debt exclusion for it. And that's always been the discussion. Do we offset a quarter of the cost of that debt exclusion, or do we purchase fire engines, which otherwise, we're gonna come up with money for those engines somewhere. Whereas not that we wanna kick the town hall project forever, um, it's a project that could get kicked. Fire engines, for instance, the longer you kick them, the less reliability you have. In particular with ladder trucks, we're scheduled to replace a ladder truck in fiscal twenty-nine. The problem we're facing is there's about a three-year backlog on getting ladder trucks. So that might be a conversation we have to have, that we may need to put money up and start placing orders to get the vehicles in when we actually want the vehicles, as opposed to waiting till fiscal twenty-nine. And now we kinda actually wait a little bit late, 'cause we do capital in the, in the fall, and then we're not getting an engine until fiscal thirty-two, thirty-three. Sorry for the long-winded answer.
No, no, I appreciate it.
Short question.
Could the reverse be true, in that if we, you know, free cash is good, we put some away into this account, um, but in the future, our free cash number is low, and we pull, we wouldn't pull from that capital account, would we?
Not to like balance the budget or something like that.
No.
You theoretically could. There's a lot of work, and town meeting, by the way, when I say we can do this, we could, town meeting has to approve all of that. You need to do it in a town meeting, you need to call a town meeting. That's also something that potentially the rating agencies would really look against. It's one thing to use free cash, which is, is surplus revenue, if you will, to offset your budget, and they never love that, but, you know, you do that. It's another thing to say, we've planned to spend two million dollars on a new roof, we've had to take that out and instead find a way to throw that at the budget. That could almost trigger a negative credit event.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Just, if you wanted me to expand, what a lot of states allow you to do with, is the way a reserve fund would work, the way I wish we could do it, is, you know, if we knew we were replacing a police cruiser every three years, and it was forty-five thousand dollars, you put fifteen thousand dollars in your budget. The next year it's fifteen thousand, and it just carries over. For us to do that, it's a very complicated, we'd need sixty-seven different stabilization funds, or a really good tracking sheet for one, and hope that people didn't say, well, we don't care that you put eight million in knowing it was gonna go this way, we're gonna move it here or there.
That might work in Caribou, may.
Yeah, it, it does, and it works well. Massachusetts, as I said, is, um, has a much stricter framework for how we're able to handle money. Not to say that we shouldn't put money aside for future capital projects, I think the concept is sound.
Mr. Plasko?
I'm opposed. I'm willing to listen to further discussion beyond tonight. As you said, we're not really ready to, I think, vote on these things, just receiving this in this time, before we go to town meeting and set the warrant. But, um, this proposal actually was made by the general manager when he first arrived, and I opposed it then, and we haven't developed it since, so I hope to continue that, that streak going forward. You have to really get into all the back and forth, pluses and minuses of, uh, what you're doing, and what else you might be doing with the money, how you're restricting it. But to me, it makes no sense. If you had a whole lot of money, even more than we have at the moment, 'cause we've been lucky with these building permits and, and the Forbes sale and everything, um, you could set something up, but even then, it kinda has an end point of its effectiveness. And, um, I, I just don't believe it works right. I don't think the concept is right. If you have free cash that you wanna be doing capital projects with, do the projects. Why do you put the free cash in the bank to wait for five years, so then spend it on the project you know you need to do? I just don't understand that. So anyhow, I think we need a more, um, intelligent discussion than what I'm throwing out at the moment, but I, I just know, studied it from the beginning, and haven't been able to be sold on it yet, and I'm still not. I'll listen to any more details and any more proposals, why somebody thinks it is a good one, but so far, no one's convinced me it is. And we had that discussion also with, uh, our CFO. She came from a town that had implemented it, and it wasn't favorable, but when you had discussions with them, whether, there was never any strong reason why they did it, other than the town manager wanted to do it, and they thought it was a good idea.
So is your position more like, it's unnecessary?
Yes.
What, um, being worth pointing out, um, not to spend all night going in the wayback machine, I do remember the first town meeting I went to, where I tried to put money in the budget for capital, and it was an absolute disaster, and, um, didn't come back to it for a couple of years. We do have roughly a million dollars in the operating budget for what I call rolling stock capital, so we have been successful at doing it that way, but those are specific identified costs that we've treated as capital, but realistically, we know we have to do. So I mean, we've made some progress. I think, um, to Mr. Plasko's point, do we put money aside for town hall? Do we put money aside for something? I mean, we know we're gonna be buying fire engines. We know we have to do town hall. A recession hits in two years, and we haven't gone out, uh, haven't gotten the debt exclusion for town hall, it might get pushed off, and we'll keep, we will never let this beautiful building get damaged, but we'll keep it going to the extent that we can.
But a big factor in any of those also is the magnitude of the project and the cost.
Sure.
Like you're saying, not like you're gonna do, you know, a town hall without an override anyhow, if your twenty million is, anyways, they're correct. So putting two million, three million aside, isn't helping you. You could be doing things with that now, and just borrow the whole thing at the time. Borrowing is not a bad word, if it's done right at the, at the right interest rates and so on, and for the right purposes. So I don't see certain, sign a couple million helps on a big project like that.
Mr. Sad, Ms. Gro?
No, no strong opinions, really, just kinda digesting other folks' position. Uh, I'm kind of, kinda in a similar camp as Mr. Plasko, kinda ambivalent about it. I could go either way unless somebody presents a real strong case for getting an advantage of doing it one way or another. The main thing I could see is a vehicle for if you, for some reason, had some sort of trust issue around how money is getting spent, to try to, you know, really pin down, no, no, this is for this purpose, but I don't foresee that being the case, so.
Thank you. I like the idea. This, this, this was a discussion point that we had, uh, when I was on FinCom. I, I think there are, and I, it's a good discussion, I think we should continue it, uh, answer those questions. Conceptually, I do like it. I think there are examples of other municipalities who have employed the vehicle, this, this, um, task, um, this, this effort rather, um, done it very well. I do believe it's, it's a good thing for us to continue to talk about, perhaps, you know, um, a chair-to-chair discussion with, with the FinCom. I mean, I, I like the idea, I would like to see more, um, not only information regarding how it would work, but I think there are, I don't like it to be open-ended. I think that if we're going to establish it, I think we need to have some specific criteria as to when that reserve would be used, what are the projects, what kind of projects could be defined as being eligible for it. But, um, but it seems to me, at this point, so we're not voting on it, I think there's, there's an opportunity for us to continue to have discussions with, with FinCom regarding, what they perceive as the, uh, the advantages of having the reserve, so. With that, when is our scheduled, I don't have my town meeting, when are we scheduled to?
The ninth article is supposed to be submitted, but we don't do any signing or anything with it, or we do it until December tenth?
Oh, um-
So we do have plenty, I mean, we've got plenty of time. And remember, in, in the past, we try to not always do it, but we can include articles that just get withdrawn if, um, the selectmen so choose to withdraw them, or if we're not there. So this, as you said, not only are you not voting tonight, it's not like we need to know by next week. And here's the other thing, remember, we tend to wanna take care of capital at the November town meeting, we're taking care of our capital plan at that meeting. The free cash doesn't go anywhere, so we could do it in March, which we wanna do only land use. We could do it in May, if we decide that's what we want to do. We could also hold a year and see where we are next year. I, I think we'll still have, so our free cash number that we will get this year, which is based on last prior year, I think will be a good one. We'll do okay the following year, but we're not gonna continue to do okay to this degree. I mean, interest rates are still high, so we're making money off money we have in the bank. Particularly, one of the brightest things we did is, we borrowed for the entire middle school project upfront, rather than chunk it out into a multitude of borrowings. We've made several million dollars off that. Um, not enough to trigger, uh, any arbitrage issue, but I mean, that's several million dollars worth of interest, plus everything we have in the bank. So we've been doing well with that, and building permits, it's gonna slow down. I think if you look in your, uh, packet, you have the building permit report, and we're at maybe a hundred grand for last month, so that's all of a sudden trending back down to historically where it's been.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so we have, um, we have at least through to September at the earliest for further discussions, and I would suggest, Mr. Mizuko, Yumi, Mr. O'Neil, we'll, we'll talk further and engage with FinCom with further discussion on, on the reserve, and come back in September with a, um, with a more firmed-up idea or, or, or concept that we can then, um, specifically recommend for the warrant or not. Is everybody fine with that? Lane?
Just leave it there, I don't want a motion.
I think we just leave it there.
Yeah.
All right, very well. Now, Mr. Mizuko, um, you have, uh, the FY twenty-five capital improving plan, improvement plan, this is item four point six.
Yes.
So the first thing, I think, Mr. Mizuko, you wanted to take us through your presentation, and then we all have the document with the, particularly the FY twenty-five projects that are listed. Capital Outlay has already seen this as well. So all good timing, 'cause Outlay will begin looking at this report, um, in August, and we did really wanna make sure the selectmen had opportunity to see the proposed plan and to have input before we go too far down the road. Mr. Mizuko, I'll turn it over to you for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're gonna go through the FY twenty-five capital improvement plan, we're gonna talk a little bit about how we develop the plan, and how it gets to the board, and eventually to town meeting. We're gonna take a minute to talk about roads, too, in particular, roads, sidewalks, and when the gas company open up, opens up the roads, which I know is always everyone's favorite topic of discussion. So our capital planning process, as the board knows, and I know for some of you, you've been through this many, many times, I apologize. I particularly apologize to Mr. Donnelly, who had a sit through this last week, but appreciate your patience. Our capital planning focus is primarily on maintaining existing equipment, infrastructure, and assets. Additions to the town's holdings have been minimal. Most years, ninety-five percent or more of our capital plan is actually just fixing something we already own. Most projects are not even considered in our capital planning, as we're limited and realistic in our ability to add to our existing capital, given our financial constraints. This year is obviously gonna be an anomaly, we've had some additional money, but we are realistic that we, we really only repair and replace existing equipment, we're not proposing all the wonderful things we think we could do, 'cause we just know we're not gonna be able to get there. Uh, the core departments that most of our projects come from, of course, public works, facilities, police, fire, recreation, the school department, although that's limited, to really transportation, a few other items, and IT, and of course, the airport. Uh, for the FY twenty-five plan, there's only one project, a, a traffic study that may potentially lead to new infrastructure, maybe the airport noise, um, study, and even then, that, we call that new infrastructure, but it's related to changes in an area, um, that we already own. Otherwise, a hundred percent of the projects on the plan are replacing or repairing existing infrastructure, and that's important to remember. Uh, for FY twenty-four, just a quick look back, we added one vehicle to the overall fleet, uh, and I know, as the board knows, every year we're buying vehicles, but they're replacing existing vehicles. We try not to add to the fleet, which adds to our operating cost. We did add a vehicle last year. Uh, one equipment purchase was an upgrade, uh, we purchased the red dot firearms to the fire department. We haven't had to pay for sidearms in something like seventeen years, but still, you could argue that, full transparency, that was an add of equipment, although it still is, uh, it was an upgrade, I guess, that, of equipment. Otherwise, last year, everything was replacing existing infrastructure. We had a particularly large plan last year, the downtown, the downtown traffic signal system, forty years old, Haas pool, seventy years old, the water tanks, uh, north, fifty years old. So every year, departments review all of their facilities, their physical infrastructure, their large equipment, and their related plant assets. The conditions usually analyzed based on life, uh, life expectancy, current condition, and utilization. Projects are added on the timeline, real, uh, based on the, um, when we expect them to fail or reach their life expectancy. We'd love to replace things and have things approved in time to make sure that by the time it's reaching that life expectancy, we're replacing it. As you know, we tend to run our assets significantly past their expected lifeline. Projects are often delayed until the pre-critical point of failure due to funding concerns. That's the reality of where a, we're a middle-class town, we've been doing really well, we'll continue to do well, we'll always make sure we'll take care of what we're doing. We try to put, uh, important things like infrastructure first, but we stretch a dollar with some of these projects. I think Haas pool's a great example, it was expensive, but seventy-year-old pool. Um, the water tanks being built in the thirties and the fifties are examples of the infrastructure that we are stretching as long as we can. We use different metrics in analyzing our, our conditions. We use for, something like a PCI or pavement condition index for roads, water lining, we look at age, problem brakes, and pressure tests. Vehicles and larger equipment are timed according to their estimated life cycle, and facilities are based on use, age, and condition. And as you know, we sort of have a, a hodgepodge of facilities. When you think about it, we run nine school buildings, and a bunch of town buildings that all do completely different things. Uh, the late selectman Hajar was always saying, could we get to using like an FCI, but a facility condition index? Large companies that run many similar facilities are able to do that. Uh, the truth of the matter is, the police station is nothing like a elementary school, which has nothing to do with how, uh, a water pump station works, so it's a little bit more challenging. We don't own fifteen police stations or sixty police stations, we have one. Um, we have five elementary schools, some of which are similar, but otherwise are a little bit different. So these projects, this was for Capital Outlay mainly, have not been formally approved. Uh, this is the staff recommendation to, uh, the selectmen at Capital Outlay. We don't anticipate short of a failure of anything, uh, anything adding to the list as it is. I do wanna talk about pavement for a minute. Norwood, like most communities, uses what we call a PCI or pavement condition index to determine the overall condition of our roads. In twenty nineteen, when we developed the current infrastructure plan, our goal was to make sure that none of our roads exceeded twenty-five years in age. We're getting there. Um, we do make decisions based on neighborhoods, we try to get like projects in an area at once, so we're not spreading out the work too sporadically. Uh, we, of course, look at use and age of paving, and we're gonna talk about that use We're gonna talk about that use in a little bit as well. We do adjust the road inventory annually based on where gas work is happening, where water and sewer work is happening, where anticipated construction is happening, and then, of course, winter impact. I can't emphasize enough, and I know, I apologize, some of you have heard this from me a million times, the winter can really do a number on a road that was otherwise in really good condition, and it could end up in really awful condition the following year. We do get a lot of the "why not my road" this year. We've got a lot of roads to do in town. We do our best to get as many done a year. We've been investing heavily and will continue to. And as I say here, road deterioration is not completely linear. It's not. Your road is 76%, and then it goes to 75 and 74. It can stay where it is for decades. It can deteriorate very, very quickly. As we've said, some roads can last 20, 30, 40 years or more without needing to be, it's paved, not paged, apologize for the typo. That being said, busy streets like Washington Street are gonna need to be redone roughly every 10 years. So just a couple of examples here, Manhattan Street has about 17,000 cars per day. Washington Street's about 18,000 cars per day, plus heavy commercial traffic and a lot of commercial activity on the roads. We did Napanet Street 20 years ago, 25,000 cars a day. 20 years is a really good lifespan for that road. That's also one that we should probably try to dial back, but we've done gas work, water work. We finally are getting that one paved. Now, if you take some of these more residential roads here, Devon Road, Welldav, Allendale Parkway, you might see a couple hundred cars per day. And that cars per day matters, because that's how much the roads are getting beat up. So you take a typical suburban road, it could be just a couple hundred cars a day. It could be 60 or 70 cars a day compared to 15,000, 20,000, 25,000. You know, Mr. Plasko lives on Manhattan Street, busy street. Mr. Donnelly on Milehead Street, pretty busy street. Mr. Sad, you have a pretty typical cul-de-sac or small side street. That might only be 30 cars a day, if that. That's why 30 years in, that street is often in great shape, but Washington Street starts looking like heck after just five years. So sidewalks are often a point of discussion. They're replaced with roads depending on the condition. That is to say, we do not replace sidewalks that are in good condition. The road paving program that we're on and we're entering year five of our plan was a road paving project. It was not designed to address all of the sidewalks in town. That would require separate appropriation and separate project. We do replace them when needed. Years ago, we began working on replacing concrete sidewalks and granite curbing along Washington Street, the center of town, in South Norwood, and generally in the more denser roads that lead towards downtown. A couple of reasons, and sometimes there's some denser neighborhoods that have a lot of traffic. Obviously, folks like the concrete sidewalks. They like the look of the granite. Cost is part of the determination. Granite is about $60 to $70 a foot, and the berm, which is what you see, is about $2 a foot. So if we were to say, well, we want concrete and granite all over the entire town, we need 10 times as much money. An example, Mr. Ryan and I were looking at Prospect Street today. If we wanted to do, and that road was recently done, but if we wanted to do concrete sidewalks and granite for Prospect Street, that's probably about a $2 million project, just to do the sidewalks on those streets, throw in another million bucks to do the road. So cost containment, being able to get as many roads done, and trying to balance it is something that factors in. And once we do the concrete and the granite, it lasts a long time, and then you will actually reuse that granite. A great example of that is At What Have. We're currently doing At What Have. The granite in part of that street, which is very close to Washington, is actually getting reused. So the granite will last through 40 or 50 years of a road cycle. We do often hear from folks about opening a road after work is done. There are several reasons why roads are being opened after they've been paved, but we're generally being compensated for it. Routine gas work that National Grid does, if it's within five years, they pay 100% of curb-to-curb paving. So that is to say, if we paved Napanet Street from Prospect all the way to the Westwood Line, and then National Grid comes in two years later and says, well, we want to install a gas line, that's fine. They're gonna pay to repave that street curb-to-curb, not just do a trench. If it's after five years, they will pay to do a trench. Now, what Norwood does that's particularly unique, that works for us, sometimes those trenches last a little bit longer, but that's because we will have them just patch the trench, give us the dollar amount of the road equivalent. We will combine that with our money and do the whole road over, if it needs to get done. If a road is eight years old and they put in a gas line, you're probably gonna have that patch for quite a while. As you know, with water work as well, we would just replace whatever we have to do a saw cut to make any water or sewer work. We are trying to line up, to the extent practical, all of the gas work in town, the significant gas work, and our water work with paving. So that is to say, if we've paved a road in the last five years, unless there's a significant financial incentive, we're not gonna open it up to put new water or sewer lines down. We would patch for water and sewer. Engrid patches any emergencies. And just two items that the question comes up, and we'll get to the plan in a minute, I promise I'll go through it quickly. You know, we just paved a road and we saw a patch in it, you know, why is that? Sometimes residents want to convert from oil to gas. And if we were to be really strict in the, in past years, prior to me being here, the board has always said that it's a five-year rule, but we're reasonable with residents. We don't want to tell a resident, no, sorry, you can't convert. The same is true of commercial buildings and nonprofits. Sometimes along a Washington Street corridor, you may have a business that wants to convert. There needs to be gas work done from to go to, from being a bookstore to being a coffee shop or something like that. You'd be telling businesses no, and sometimes we're telling nonprofits no. So a church wants to convert to natural gas because it's cheaper to operate. We want to keep our nonprofits and our civic groups in town going, and if we tell them absolutely not, you can't do it for a couple of years, we're really telling our own community that the road is more valuable than what they're trying to do. That being said, we post notices. We try to communicate with people, both businesses, nonprofits, and roads. We had an example where a church really wanted to have a gas project, save them a lot of money. They've raised the funding for it. We've worked them to wait as long as they reasonably can. Otherwise, diverting them around a different street would have cost them $20,000 or $30,000 more. At some point, it just doesn't make sense from a community perspective. We've never strictly enforced a five-year moratorium, and again, I just went over these. We would be preventing certain businesses and nonprofits from expanding, opening new ventures, and it sounds good to say you're not allowed to open the road, but then when a resident comes in and says, but I'm ready to convert to natural gas, obviously, we wish they would convert to all electric, but converting to natural gas from oil, it's hard to tell residents, no, sorry, you paid for this road, and we're not gonna, we're not gonna let you improve your home.
Before you, maybe we can just, I know you're gonna get to the projects, but this, I asked for this to be included this evening, because we, Outlay, as many of us have had questions about this, so I'd like to maybe open up discussion about the road maintenance process that's just been described by Mr. Mizuko before we go project by project. Any comments, questions about how roads are managed? I had, Mr. Sad, you and I probably had the same thought.
You can bring it up, Mr. Chairman.
So I wanted to give an example, just to see how it works. So last meeting, we had National Grid who wanted, and we did approve, gas main work on Moore Street, in the 100th block of Moore Street. That street is maybe a year, not even a year, paved. So I don't know, maybe it's, Mike, Mr. Sad, maybe 100-foot marking, 50 feet? So when they do that work, what's the next step? How do we, you mentioned that we, Engrid's gonna have to pay us for the paving, not a patch, but paving from right side to left side.
Correct. They're not just gonna fix the small portion where they did. They have to do it curb-to-curb, which means that entire section of the street in a reasonable amount of area in either side. So they'll saw cut that piece of the road, they will chug the whole thing up, and they will have to repave the entire thing. What we do differently than some other towns, some towns do it, but most don't, we prefer to get the money from National Grid based on the estimated cost of the job and include it with our road work and bid it out ourselves.
They're not paving, we are.
Yes, we prefer to do it through our road program. So sometimes that means it takes a little bit longer, and you might just see a patch there, but we would rather add it with our road work. We get a benefit by the more projects we do, you save on the volume. We have one vendor. It's a vendor that we usually use. We, the last six, seven years, there's only really, yeah, it's much better quality control. There's only a couple of different vendors that usually bid on it, whereas National Grid has statewide contracts, probably national contracts, and we just prefer to have a little bit of control over it. We know we're gonna get a good job. We know engineering is gonna review it. We found that that works for us. I candidly think, even though we're investing a lot, we still have some of the best roads in the county, and I think that it's worth doing. And we have a great relationship with National Grid. I know we all get frustrated at utilities. I do as well, but from a utility standpoint, we have a good working relationship with them, which we appreciate.
Yeah, that project that we had here last meeting sort of was highlighted to me as like, well, I use that word a lot, so I do know that it just was recently paved. I was wondering what the, for lack of a better term, the contribution by Engrid would be for digging that recently paved area. I thank you for the information. Are there any other questions about the road paving program, Mr. Sad?
My thought, I mentioned to Mr. Rosen last, two weeks ago, was in front of the Iverson's house, they just dug a hole, and it's a six, eight-inch dip where the hubcap is.
I can address that, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So that's done as part of the, yeah, you and I, since you and I passed that, that's utility work associated with the project. So I did bring that to Mr. Slater's attention. He brought it to W.T. Rich's attention. The paving that was done at the first entrance is fine, utility work there. When you hit the second, it's not. You hit a big bump. In fact, there was a car that bottomed out there over the weekend that I was witness to. So Mr. Slater did get back to me and said, W.T. Rich is aware of it, and they'll work to correct that.
They'll do it right now, this time, yeah.
That's in the, that's in the building committee purvey, since it's their work, but yeah.
Yeah, it's a heavily traveled road, and every time I go by, I hit that thing. Well, the other thing, Mr. Chairman, was the Mr. Managers, when they cut a road for a main down 30 feet, 100 feet, 300 feet, is there a time, like, within a year, when they don't, they just put the berm in and it starts sinking?
So as I said, it depends on, A, where we are in the calendar year, based on weather. If it's a large patch that needs to be done, we would prefer that they just put a patch in, and that's when you see it sometimes dips a little bit. In the following year, we would rather add it to our road work, so that we will properly correct. It can be, yeah, depending on the size and scope.
Perfect.
We just find that gets us a better product in the end.
Yeah, people have called me, and they said, listen, my road's been a year. What's going on? So now we know. Perfect.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mizuko.
I'll begin going through the, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll begin going through the capital plan projects, and you can either start me at each one, or at the end, we can go through and summarize. So project number one would be a rep, to complete an air study, sorry, an air study, an air study at the airport, a noise study at the airport. We have not done one since the early 1990s, and the goal is to look at a, what programs and what we could do to implement at the airport that may reduce noise, if the noise study shows that. And sometimes there's different projects that come of this. This is how we did this last time, but it has been about 30 years.
I think, Justin, right as it come up, Mr. Plasko.
So we have problems with noise, I understand that. We want to look at it, if there's any way to control it, improve it, so a study. But what happened to the last study? Did we ever implement any of that?
Some of them.
You know, in other words, do we spin our wheels, or how do we know 20,000 is nearly enough money?
So, well, this would just be to do the study. This isn't actually to implement anything from the study. Airplanes are always gonna make noise, and I don't want anyone to think we're gonna study the noise and be able to make it go away. Let's set that expectation very early on, but sometimes there are, it's on the capital plan, because there might be improvements you can make or changes you can make that will hopefully reduce it. Some of it ends up being technical. Part of it's just the best practice. You should evaluate it every 25 to 30 years as technology changes on the planes.
Isn't the noise, for the most part, and there goes my real layman on this subject, but I thought, from things we've been told, that the noise and so forth that disturb this is really the flight paths, because the planes make the noise. We can't stop the fact that they make the noise. And so you might be talking about changing the directions they come and they go, but we were also told, I believe, if I'm correct, but my understanding is we were told, we don't really have any control over that, there's a control tower, those FAA does.
Correct. So the study.
And wind conditions and everything else, so what are we studying?
The directions they're going in, the baffles of where the noise goes, whether any natural barriers could reduce noise. Part of it is, I don't want to call it an academic study, but looking at flight paths and stuff like that, and part of it looks like, are there any enhancements that can be made to the airport, or changes that might reduce, might reduce, you may need to repave part of the runway and have planes take off further back or further up, and maybe there's amendments you can make there to your equipment. Do you have different landing gear that lets planes land sooner or later that makes a difference in where they're taking off? We're including it with the capital plan rather than a separate appropriation, because if there is a capital project that follows up, we've been trying to make sure sort of study, design, construction is going through the capital plan.
I actually have that question for the Donnelly.
To Mr. Plasko's point, the noise that the airport has some control over is on the ground?
Correct.
Takeoffs and landing?
Correct.
Once they're up in the air, that is FAA complaint process?
Correct. We, as we say, we like to say, we manage the building and the grounds, and once a plane is off the ground, it's entirely the purview of the FAA. But it's a best practice to study this periodically for airports, see what you can be, if anything can be done.
Will the study cover FAA responsibilities for planes that are circling around neighborhoods in Norwood?
With the understanding that the planes are always able to do what they go where they want to go.
Right, understanding that there's no control of the airport commission or the airport manager over them.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And I guess you just answered my question, and why is 20,000 considered capital? Because you might tie it into the.
A project down the road. And we haven't really been borrowing for studies in the past. We've kind of had to borrow for the study and then hope we did the project so we can wrap the bond into it. This is small enough that it would be cash. It may be that there's nothing capital down the road that comes of it, and it would be, it's free cash one way or the other. Facilities Department, two pickup trucks. They currently maintain 15 vehicles, plus their large equipment and trailers. They're averaging about 11 years old. We'd like to hit to roughly a 10-year vehicle replacement schedule for facilities. We are likely gonna try to add the facilities' replacement vehicles after this. We need to get caught up to the regular operating budget. As I mentioned, we have school, special ed, transportation vans, DPW vehicles, police cruisers, and a fire admin vehicle in the operating budget. It's probably time for facilities to get there. We've just been waiting for a few years as facilities settles out. But two vehicles on their replacement schedule. The parking lot at the Savage Center was delayed from last year, as we just tried to move the plan around to maximize, minimize, rather, the amount of free cash that we're using. This parking lot is original to the building around 40-plus years ago. If you have driven on it recently, you'll notice it is in pretty rough shape. We did do the senior center portion of this facility three years ago, maybe, maybe four. It was in slightly worse shape, and there were some particular concerns with some frost wells that were developing. The lot, as I like to say, at this point, is probably as much patched as it is original lot, so it's come up as we've been cycling through the last several years and will the next several years on doing a number of parking lots every year until we're kind of set for the next 40-year period.
Well, this parking lot, if it's original to Savage, means that it's closer to 50 years old.
I'm a firm believer that the 90s were 10 years ago, so.
I mean, you were generalizing for schools, but this particular one, I believe, was maybe opening in 1972, '73, '74.
So then, yeah, it's probably 50 years old.
Question?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
It's old. It needs repair, but I went up there and looked at it. It's not that bad a shape. Aesthetically, it is, but there's no, we've already done, as you can see from these pictures, a lot of patching and so forth. No one's gonna, you know, break the front end of their car. No one's gonna trip and break an ankle on the asphalt because of the condition it's in today. Is there a reason to possibly, not say it's not gonna eventually, something like this be needed, but delay this particular project? The things that the schools are looking at, mostly, I guess, elementary, but are they looking system-wide? Is there anything that might affect this building that it might make sense, if there might be a future reuse of this property, that we don't do this now, we wait?
Sure. So I, that gets to really long-range capital planning. I've always made it clear, at some point, we're gonna have to take this building offline. I mean, it's $150 million to renovate the, to build a new middle school. We know at some point, we're gonna need a $4 million repair at this building, a $3 million repair at this building, and there's, I think, 11 preschool classrooms in there, plus some offices and some other use. At some point, it's not gonna be worth to maintain that building. We don't have another option yet for that to happen. What I would suspect is, hopefully, we get to a point where maybe three to five years, five to seven years, we no longer need to use the building. Then we take it offline, decide we don't want to keep it as a swing school. Then I think it's probably the best place to build a new civic center down the road, but I don't have the $40 million to do those things in the next couple of years. So I think by the time we reasonably are doing something else here, the new lot's gonna be a decade old, if I'm being honest. So I, point well taken, but.
If it was in the next few years, I'd change the priorities of years.
If you want to find me the $40 million bucks, we'll relocate what's there, tear it down, build a new civic there.
Who said you build a new civic?
We can dream, Mr. Plasko.
Remember, we talked about direct department earlier?
Yeah, exactly.
Keep us informed.
It'll appear on the warrant one day. Next item up is a replacement order of our fire engines, as we've been going through this fleet, as we periodically have to do on a roughly 15- or 20-year time cycle. We originally had an ambulance scheduled for this year. We did get our two ambulances in last year, so we've swapped the ambulance and the engine, because engines are upwards of 18 months to two years to get there, a year in good times. They're being kicked out even longer to get it. So you think right now, we're talking in July about needing to replace this engine. If we get a successful vote from town meeting in October, we place an order. It's still 18 months to two years until we actually get the, a new engine in. Ladder trucks are looking at three years. What we have been doing with our fleet, years ago, we did have somewhat of a hodgepodge fleet.[1574.33] The goal is that this next engine would be a mirror image, and then the one after that would be a mirror image. So we would have a ladder truck and four engines that are effectively the same design, which saves money, saves maintenance, increase, enhances operations. In the past, we've sort of gone in different directions, buying fundamentally different vehicles. We are in the process of slowly standardizing the fire fleet.
Can I ask this question at capital outlay, but this would be fully stocked vehicles?
Yes, that's a good point, Mr. Donnelly. We've moved away from just putting in the cheapest possible cost to hope it looks good and then looking for money for everything else. This is the all-in cost of the engine. It includes all of its equipment, all of its outfitting, all of its lettering, some of the things, as everyone's aware, we would do in the past, where we'd say we just needed 36 grand for the police cruiser, and then we'd be in there at the end of the year saying, well, but we need $9,000 to outfit the police cruiser. This is the all-in cost to get it up and running with a contingency.
I made, I was gonna mention this at the end, but I'll put it out there now and reiterate it later. So the capital outlay committee is meeting, I believe it's August 19th, and we intend to have, I guess, our version of touch a truck. And where we'll probably have some of the vehicles from the list that's being replaced, including the fire engine, brought to the lot behind us here so that the committee can, can, can meet with the fire staff and see the condition of the engine that's planned for replacement. And once you finalize that, I'll send the invite out to, a note out to the board in case you're interested in touching the trunk as well. We'll have, there'll be other vehicles in addition to that. It's 1.3 million, that's correct.
This would be year five, our next, moving on to our next part, year five of our road replacement project, road replacement program. As the board knows, we are entering the fifth year of this infrastructure repair project that we have been working towards for quite a while. You'll notice the pictures we have there for Allendale Parkway, for instance. One of the reasons we need to combine money from free cash, and we'll talk about where else it's gonna come from, as well as Chapter 90, as well as what's in the budget. Allendale Parkway, great example of a road that was in rough shape, got done, looks like a million bucks, and it cost nearly that. That one road was about $700,000. So we're gonna need to continue, we're gonna need to certainly finish this project with year five, and we may look and want to look at whether we want to do a year six, whether we want to do a sidewalk enhancement program or something similar. We talked about when we started this program, we would be borrowing each of the five years, and then by sort of year six or seven, the debt service would peak. And then as that number dropped every year a little bit, that money would get added into what we operate for, what we have in the operating budget for roads. That way, by year 15 or so, we know we've got enough money in the budget for roads. Now, we paid cash last year, we may propose paying cash this year, so that changes those numbers a little bit. We're still gonna want to make sure we're keeping up with inflation on our road paving budget for what's in the operating budget, because Chapter 90 is not expanding at a level that would ever be, that's our state money for roads, that would ever be able to accommodate that. But we also may want to consider that in a 10- to 15-year period, some of the major roads in town, we may want to treat them separately as capital projects. And I use, you know, again, if you, if Prospect Street's a million-dollar road, in a year where we're not doing our supplemental appropriation, that's almost everything we have. If you were to take a Washington Street, for instance, we usually do it in three chunks because it just, it's a lot of work to try to do it all at once. That's almost three years' worth of our road money out of a 10-year period. So when you look at just a couple of the major roads in a 15-year period, they're gonna occupy more than half of our road work. We'd probably need to either continue to increase that budget annually for road paving or just look at every couple of years, there's gonna be some capital project to bang out a couple of the larger roads at once.
I think that, Mr. Plasko, please, go right ahead.
The concern I have on, is not finishing this project, but whether or not we could slow it down. It comes up, I've brought it up as a complaint of mine. It's come up at town meeting every year for the last several years by Mr. McFaulin, when we're talking about doing this project, but what about the sidewalks? And last week, last year, a comment was made to me that, I think we have a plan, maybe for how we can start sidewalks. And you just referenced, maybe when this is, a couple of years when this is further down the road, we can maybe think about developing one. Our sidewalks are in pretty bad shape in a lot of places, and a lot worse than the driveway at the Savage Center. And people are out walking everything a whole lot more. I don't think we should be delaying that project. And if it, I think we should be starting a new one designed for the sidewalks. And if it has to, if we don't have another source of money to add to it, then maybe, you know, we take $500,000, $800,000 from this and put it towards that. So we don't stop the commitment to this, obviously, but yeah, we're gonna slow it down a little bit because we have other needs as well, rather than wait five years to even get started on the sidewalks.
Sure. Point well taken. I wasn't suggesting we wait five years to start on the sidewalks. I was thinking, if we're looking at, we, we built a five-year program based on how much work we needed to get done. We wanted to get it done within five years. We wanted to make sure we chunked it up so we could have some flexibility if we had to. But we also based it on how much work we can reasonably get done in a year. My thought is, do we do a year six that maybe focuses, maybe we just do the whole program for year six? Or do we do a year six that focuses specifically on sidewalks? I wouldn't amend the road program because, again, we've sort of taken a lot of time to make sure we're lining up everything we need to get done, getting it all done well, and then it's all part of maintaining going forward. If we want to look at sidewalks separately, what we can do is, we can either do a sidewalk inventory and look at the conditions, or Mr. Ryan and I can come back in a month or two with an idea of, well, if you allocated X dollars, here's what we think we could do. We would like to finish the roads first, at least get this, what we planned to do in the five years done, because, again, it was always planned as just a road repair project. But that being said, it's, in reasonable time, we can come back if you'd like to see about adding a project or what that would look like. And, you know, again, if we said, well, what if we did an additional $1 million for sidewalks? Let's give you an idea of what that would look like. An example, again, as I said, Prospect Street would be a million dollars.
But
But that's a big, that's a long road.
But a million dollars is gonna do, a million dollars of sidewalks is needed today. It's needed. Instead of waiting five or six years and that many more sidewalks are needed, we haven't even started.
Right. I'm not saying wait five or six years. We're in year five of this program. So the appropriation we will be making in October is the fifth and final year in this program. So we'd be sitting here next year saying, what do we want to do about something comprehensive for sidewalks?
So would you, for example, be able to come back next year? So 2.8 million, this is the fifth year. We go forward with it, it's completed, we've done our five-year project completion, now road repair is now funded by Chapter 90 in operating budget. That was our plan. Now, the idea would be, now that we've done the roads, now we focus on a simpler plan, perhaps, for sidewalks?
Is there additional money we can allocate?
Not waiting five years, but rather putting
Yeah, oh, sorry, maybe I misunderstood you. I'm not necessarily saying a five-year plan for sidewalks. We can put together some numbers to give you an idea of, hey, if we allocated a half a million dollars, here's what we would probably do. If we allocated a million, and sort of give you those price points, an idea of what we would be able to, to get for what we were doing and where we would want to go. So we can bring that back within, give me 30 days.
Can we bring such a plan back in perhaps the second meeting in September or a September meeting to kind of like outline what the options would be for us to attack the issue of sidewalks?
We can do, we can put something together for the board.
That'd be good to look at.
Totally.
Mr. Plasko, anything else?
No.
Sad had a question.
Just, Mr. Manager, 2.8 million's additionally on top of the excise tax, correct?
No, the excise tax has nothing to do with roads. I know that sounds funny that we pay an excise tax, but the, we, we generate about $5 million a year in excise taxes at the local level. That's just a general fund receipt.
And that, that is not, i.e., it's so much percentage for the, for the roads and
At the state level, it does. So the, the state does what they do with their, with the gas tax. At the local level, it's just, that's just a general receipt.
All right.
The four and a half million dollars we make a year, if we wanted to put that in for road paving, I think that'd be great, but we'd be plugging a hole somewhere else.
But in addition to 2.8 million, the operating budget in Chapter 90 cover maybe a million and a half?
Yeah, a million, three, maybe.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Washington Street Bridge Repair, this was also delayed from last year as we were trying to just fit projects onto the plan. The project was deferred. It would keep, it would provide the necessary repairs to keep the bridge in good working order for the next generation. Scope would be determined by our most recent bridge report. We have been successful at replacing some of our smaller bridges. We don't anticipate any grant funding for this particular bridge. However, it's worth noting that in the last couple of years, we have done some great bridge work and been successful where grants are available. You'll notice the two projects here, a $700,000 project that our cost ended up being just under $200,000, $200,000, and then an $875,000 project for which we paid about $374,000. So we continue to be aggressive for, with the municipal small bridge grant program. We would certainly try again. We just don't think that this one's actually going to meet the parameters. But we've been successful in this area as well in making sure that we're keeping up on our infrastructure.
And the reason we deferred it was because of the construction activity that's being at the Haws and the
Correct. More so that than the financial consideration, do we need to spend it with all that's going on up there?
Extremely busy street.
Yeah.
Just to say.
Mr. Manager, that bridge now, are we gonna take half at a time or what's the plan?
Yeah, the, the traffic would be a nightmare. There's no way to get around it. There's no way to do the bridge report without, the bridge repairs without that, so it would likely be going down to one lane at different points of time. One of the reasons for delaying with the other construction going on is we want to make sure that there's parking available for the businesses in the areas as well. But it's gonna be challenging work, there's no way around it.
There's no way to do like down on the railroad bridge? Just bring one to the side, drop it on a crane in one weekend and get it out of there?
I wish.
All right.
I mean, we managed to do it with Dean Street a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
And I have great pictures of that when it was all opened up. So we survived Dean Street, we would, we would survive this. And as somebody who patronizes some of the businesses in the area, we'll make sure that they're, they're taken care of.
Yeah, make sure. Thank you.
This could be a water borrowing for the sewer inflow and infiltration. It's the next generation of looking at our system-wide sewer inflow and info, inflow and infiltration. This would map out on camera the entire system. We do need to have the full appropriation of 1.5 million dollars, but it is a grant loan from the MWRA, so our portion would actually only be just about $400,000. This would allow us to know where there are any sewer inflows and out, inflows and infiltration is what's getting into the sewer system. They'll also let us know where it's leaking. There's an environmental benefit of knowing what's getting in, but candidly, there's also a cost benefit to the town. We do pay for, call it every gallon of sewer that is produced. So if there's water getting into the sewer system, sometimes that happens naturally. Sometimes, I think, as the diagram shows here, a tree root gets in, it creates a crack, and then there's water able to get in. That all gets processed ultimately at Deer Island, and ultimately, we pay for it. And I know it sounds like, you know, a gallon here or there not getting in is not a big deal, but if you have a crack in a pipe somewhere and, or an illegal stormwater connection, it can be, it can really start to add up for, for the time in terms, in terms of our sewer flow. And it's important as well, a part of our sewer flow with the MWRA, we are rated, if you will, based on our system share. So anything we can do to shrink that. That being said, it's a good option to get a million dollars' worth of work for $400,000 worth of work, or $400,000 of our money.
So we're gonna spend a million and a half to repair the pipes under the ground?
This is just for the mapping of the system?
Mapping of the system, just, just to make a plan?
The camera work that's being
Yeah. So it's, it's literally a little robot that drives through every sewer pipe. And we own over 100 miles of sewer pipe, so I know folks, it doesn't sound like it's as much. It literally maps the entire system for all inflow and infiltration.
What's the work?
The work is really the little camera going through and taking pictures and video.
No, not the study. When you decide you've done the study, mapped it out, improvements need to be done.
That'll be part of the study to decide what needs to be done and where we need to do work. And it's gonna be based on the size and scope of the problem.
It's not a realigning job.
It could be, it may be replacing pipes depending on where it is.
So all the new roads we just put down?
No. So a typical residential road is not necessarily the
No, thank you.
Not necessarily the, the program. We wouldn't be opening up new roads. I mean, we have, we have sewer pipes that run all the way across the airport, for instance, all the way through all that white land. There, there are sewer pipes, remember, it ultimately gets all the way to Deer Island. We have a lot of pipes in town. And you make a reasonable, reasonable call, if you have a little bit of water leaking in on a residential street, it's not gonna be worth the cost to pop that open and try to fix it. But if you have areas where you have significant leaks, that's where you're gonna say, okay, here's a plan to start addressing where we have these leaks. It also does tie into our, our compliance for a number of environmental permits as well.
But the result of this could be, we have to do a lot of work.
Oh, yeah, we've already had orders from the federal government.
Yeah.
Right. Okay.
Just the tearing up of the roads, we got my skin up.
There's some, some of the water studies we've had on our different waterways where some of them are very contaminated. And it's like, well, we think it might be infiltration, but we don't know where. Good luck finding it.
Right.
Something like this could help us start pinning some of that down, right?
Absolutely. And you're gonna prioritize what the work is. And again, as I said, a nickel-sized hole on a residential street, you know, that we can see dripping in, some water dripping in, that's not likely to cause us to spend $100,000 to open something up and make a $10 repair. But you're gonna find illegal connections, you're gonna find where you have significant erosion, other issues, and other debris that ends up getting treated. And again, it's money we'd be spending, but it's money we are paying now to treat what shouldn't be going through the sewer, as well as the environmental benefit. But if you think of the timeline, by the time it's done and by the time we have a plan, I mean, we're, we're years away from projects for this.
Yeah. Mr. Manager, is some, is this some of the, the camera from the DPW could handle overtime-wise?
No, we wouldn't, we couldn't do something like this in-house. It's the camera and it's the mapping. I mean, you'd be diverting staff for a year and a half to do it if we tried to do it on our own. And then it's the complexity of the reporting and doing it. We're, our camera's basically designed to go 10 feet in one direction and look at your pipe. This is a, a whole different beast.
The MWRA employs a specific team to do this for their, their main sewer systems, and it's like, it's not trade work, but it's specialized work to operate the camera to get into those and map the systems, so.
And it's, it's very time-consuming. Again, you're, you're driving it down the poop pipe, mapping it, looking at it, taking pictures, recording every time a pipe turns somewhere and looks. I mean, it's, sure, we could do it if I could hire four employees and buy $200,000 worth of equipment and give me three years, and we'll be there. Further questions on the sewer, I and I? And there is a chance we, if we, as the board knows, we signed an agreement with Sunrise and Sharon to connect the sewer system. They've gotta have their project actually happen, but it's possible that that might happen at some point, and that money could be used for this if it did, or it would go into the water sewer fund and could be used to start that work. This is a traffic study for the Washington and Mileau Street intersection. It would study the operation of the intersection at the street. It may determine that traffic signals are warranted. We are not allowed to just install traffic signals wherever we want, so we're not saying that's gonna happen. We have to meet certain conditions that DOT has for traffic levels and traffic roads, but you need to do a comprehensive study of the traffic, day and night, over the seven-day, over more than just a seven-day period, and then identify what, if anything, is needed to address traffic at the intersection.
This is not designed, it's just a study whether we think we need it. Then after that, if we decided we needed it, then we'd have to design it?
It depends on what
It's $100,000 to study
It's a complicated
A intersection that we all know pretty well. It's ridiculous.
Again, we have to, we do have to meet a certain standard for DOT to allow us to be able to do traffic lights, if that's what we wanted to do.
On local roads?
Even on local roads, yeah. We are, we are not allowed to just install them wherever we want, even if we're paying for them.
I think when we built our neighborhood, $100,000 was put in escrow for those lights. They never got built. I think if we checked back, there's a study that was done, and that there should be money in escrows.
So I'll, looking at the money in escrow.
$100,000 from Franny LeBrecq for Hamilton Circle, Ryan Thompson.
For this intersection?
Yeah.
What year was that?
90.
90. So Mark Ryan wasn't aware of that, but we'll, we'll take a look. Any studies that were put aside? I don't, I'm not aware of seeing any escrow account that's ever been on the town's books.
I might even have it through my purchase and sale.
The planning board would have required that, just like they did up here with the Capinelli.
Yeah, there was $100,000 put aside by the developer for lights at Mileau and Washington.
We'll have to look at it. The town doesn't have the money, certainly. Any studies from then wouldn't be relevant for the work today, unfortunately. But as you know, sometimes it may not be traffic signals.
Did they do a study or did they put money aside for a study? No, I think they did a study.
Oh, they did the study, I think so. So that would be obsolete now?
Oh, they just did it for a study, then, yeah. The study won't be, won't be worth it today. The street looks great, though. DPW large capital purchase, salt truck number six, it's a 2009 Salter Sander. As the board knows, we, we take care of most of the DPW routine vehicles through the operating budget, and they still need to come to capital for their large, larger vehicles and equipment. This would be year five of our water improvement program, and as the board sees and everyone at home watching can see, on the left is an actual pipe taken from Walnut Ave this year in July of 2024. The right is what a lined pipe looks like once it's done, and they have a 50-plus-year lifespan. So that pipe on the left there is what your water would be going through up until recently until recently if you lived on Walnut Ave. I have other pictures of it. It's not a safety issue as much as it certainly is a quality issue, both the, um, the, the look of the water. It's also more importantly, in some ways, a fire flow issue. So you've got a picture, God forbid, your house is on fire and unfortunately we've had more of those. That water can flow through the pipe on the left or the pipe on the right. I know everyone gets upset when we raise the water rates every year. I know everyone gets upset when I show them, but this is, this is what we're trying to do. We believe what's on the right is better than what's on the left. New construction has lined pipes. It's not a problem under, uh, new construction anywhere in the country, but this is pre, um, these are cast iron pipes. The water system we have is very stable. We have good water, but we have a lot of, we still have a lot of lining work to do. Uh, in addition, and this is also from Oak Road, so there's, uh, sometimes it looks a little different. We do this in two parts. It's the four point five million dollar borrowing project as well as we do a six hundred and thirty thousand dollar zero interest loan from the MWA every year. Uh, that pipe on the left is a coupon cut from Oak Road just earlier this year. So not quite as bad as the one on the left, but a little bit more coloration.
This is work, Mr. Mizuka, this is work that our team does or do we contract some of this out?
Oh, we contract it out.
Okay.
Yeah. It's a, it's a, it's a bid that goes out. I think, uh, I think Prescott has the bid this year. I could be wrong. Um, we can do a small section of pipe here or there. We'd never be able to do the twenty thousand feet or so that we're, um, we're doing. Now, this is the middle of a ten year project, so this would be year five. We did talk about pausing for one to two years when the water tank debt hits for that project. But remember that that, we did get into the state revolving fund loan for that project, so we won't actually pay the debt service on the water tanks until the project is completed. So we're looking at that being roughly fiscal twenty-nine. So we would likely continue this through fiscal twenty-seven and then it would maybe be twenty-eight, twenty-nine. We would take a pause to begin absorbing the rate increase so that we're not going up fifteen percent in a year on the water rates, um, and then recontinue. So we may be able to get away with just a two-year pause, uh, and maybe we complete our lining project in twelve years as opposed to, um, uh, ten years. Any other questions on the water lining? Do you want to leave the picture up there a little longer or are we-
No, thank you.
Sorry. Uh, replacement of the Savage Center tennis courts. The courts were installed, uh, when the Savage Center was built in nineteen sixty-nine, so that answers your question, Mr., uh, Mr. Donnelly, um, as to when the parking lot likely went in. The concrete has started to fail. Uh, one suggestion I did make to capital outlay that this board may want to consider, we do have the, um, the other tennis courts, I think the Coakley Court scheduled in two years. Whether or not, or I think in one year out, whether or not we'd want to combine both and just get them done at the same time. Um, there's not really a cost savings. You save a little bit by having one bidder, but I wouldn't pitch that, you know, instead of eight hundred thousand dollars, it's six hundred. There would be a benefit to having one vendor or one type of material used, one, essentially one project. It's not anything I can assign a dollar amount to, but something worth considering whether we just get both tennis courts done at once.
So right now you have the Ivets tennis courts plotted FY twenty-seven for three hundred thousand. So you're asking the, for consideration of moving that to the FY twenty-five plan, um, in combination with this one?
Correct. Have it one project, one contract, one bid. It will be replacement of tennis courts at these two locations, one vendor, one type of materials. Mr. Plasko?
We are talking replacement.
Yes, we're not just-
We did repair not that many years ago really and it hasn't held up, hasn't worked.
That's why it's time to, we've got to replace it.
And, and personally, I think the idea of doing both together, if we can justify, uh, the need with the money to be spent compared to other needs, uh, generally makes sense. If we're only going to do one at a time, I actually think you should still switch the two of them and do the Ivets first because I've looked, oh, I see the Ivets one every morning, but I went up purposely to look at the Savage also. And while it is in need of repair, has the cracks and everything, it certainly, again, is no worse than the Ivets. And the Ivets, we're talking about doing anyhow, just a year or two down the road. And we've done everything else in that area. Well, why not finish up the project to get that done and then come back to this? If this one was in worse shape, I'd say, yeah, we have to concentrate on the one that's in worse shape. But if they're pretty much the same thing, why don't we just get the other one done?
Fair point.
And that one's in worse condition, not in the surface for the tennis and the basketball. But I mean, the, the Ivets is in worse condition. Um, the surface is about the same, but the Ivets is really in bad shape with the fence and stuff around it.
Yeah, and I'm, and we're going to replace-
I don't think they ever put the, um, footings or anything deep enough that things leaning falling over.
And the fence is needed to get replaced as part of the project, so it is a soup to nuts. Certainly value to that.
Just some thoughts. Certainly if we're not getting out of the business, have to fix those courts. They're not in great shape.
If you were to move the Ivets to this current year, I assume that's probably not going to conflict with any construction-
Is there an estimate on the Ivets? What year was that?
Three hundred thousand in FY twenty-seven.
You know, I, I can get some updated estimates, um, and check with a couple vendors and say, okay, do it, what do you think for the two of them together? Again, not really a cost savings, but it would be better to make sure we have same material done at the same time as we're making repairs and everything. Even though our bid specs would specify what we want to use for materials, two different contractors, ten years from now you're trying to chase down a contractor.
And they won't save as much as you're thinking because they're two separate locations. They have to re-
Right, that's what I'm saying.
All that stuff.
Maybe it's five thousand dollars less. I, I can't sell it as a saving money as much as it just makes more sense to have one vendor do them at once.
My only thought would be is I wouldn't do both at the same time in case you have a, a contract though. You wouldn't have any tennis people playing tennis anywhere. And the other thing is, do we put a timeframe like on a tennis court? Like, is it a month, two months for them to finish it, complete it, start to complete?
Yeah, all of our contracts contain performance, um, measurements and timeline. Obviously that can change, you were in construction yourself, that can change based on what you,
Yeah.
what you find. If we, and just to be clear, if we did both at the same time, I don't, we wouldn't be shutting down both at the same time. It would just be one contractor-
Finish one, then stop the other.
Exactly. We're, we're relatively small potatoes. If you're a large city, you're contracting out for, hey, you've got to do our twenty-eight tennis courts this summer, bang, 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 bang. We would do one and then the other.
A lot of the job is always carrying up and moving equipment. It's still going to be two projects at that.
Yeah. But, you know, probably still one mobilization of getting set up in town and they know that they'll be with us for fifteen weeks or however long it takes.
Maybe we put grass in like Wimbledon. Wouldn't have to tire it.
You're going to mow it?
I'll mow it.
All right. Good for stormwater.
Yep.
Last project that we have, um, from capital is the replacement of the school minibus, uh, fleet, five of the school minibuses. We have been replacing school vans and the special transportation fleet regularly. We have money in the operating budget. Four of these five vans were purchased in, I believe, oh, eight, and school transportation is requesting to replace them. Would be better to spread it out. That being said, with the fleet being sort of bought in bulk at one time, it's hard to convert away from that to a, uh, system of regular replacement.
Yeah, my only comment at Outlay, um, was if, if, I understand, but if we knew that there was a, a need to replace these five, maybe this should have been on the plan earlier as, for the out years. So this was a little bit of surprise for us, but we, you know, it's, when we do our touch a truck event, you know, we will ask for the minibus, the replacement vehicles to, the vehicles being replaced to have some samples to come down for the Outlay to see.
Which one are we doing? Five to six.
Yeah. Any other questions on the buses?
So as presented, total summary, and some of the project costs are subject to change, but we won't be, uh, unless there's a, some sort of an emergency, we won't be adding or deleting anything from the plan that we have presented. About seven point one million in free cash and then about six point seven million in water borrowing. No general fund borrowing this year. The FinCom had wanted to see possibly no borrowing and, um, candidly, given the size and scope of the projects and the cash availability, we anticipate having, we will, um, be able to accomplish that. Even if we have some escalation and we add in the, uh, Ivets courts to this project or anything else that comes up, you're looking at maximum of fifteen million dollars this year. I think last year's total cost was something like thirty-five million. So it's a little unbalanced, but significantly lower than, uh, last year, which had three major projects.
That, that seven point one million in general fund cash, that could be a combination of free cash and for-
That's likely what we'll propose, but-
Two million.
Yeah, correct. It'll likely be five million and two, but for purposes how we normally categorize projects, it's, it's cash that we'd be paying for it.
And you, um, one more question, Mr. Plasko. And I know it's early, but you did mention sort of a, the parameters, not the reject, the free cash projection at this point looks pretty healthy.
Yes.
Similar to last year. Last year was in, it was in the year twelve, I think.
Yeah.
So, okay. Mr. Plasko, I'm sorry.
Uh, thank you. I'm not sure that I would agree that if we go with these projects, all these projects at town meeting recommending all of this come from free cash versus any borrowing is necessary, a wise recommendation. I'd like if you could get for us, Mr. Manager, uh, for, uh, see if, oh, I could see Chief Financial Officer, I guess. What is the current principal and interest in this year's budget? What is it going to be next year? What do we expect to, how much coming off or going on based on the current financial situation? And what would, uh, this number, seven million, add to the debt service?
We can get that for you.
Thank you.
Did you just want to see the, the seven million, uh, debt service or do you want to vary, you know, any variation of that, five, seven, five, three, anything like that or?
The way we can present it, that's easiest is, is effectively for every million dollars at whatever, so we, we can get you a spreadsheet that'll-
We can do that now.
You can play, you can-
So we can figure that out?
Yeah. Pick, pick your number.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments on funding?
Mr. Chairman, if you want, I can go through the projects that are in the operating budget, um, most of which were actually already approved in May. Do you want me to go through them or are we?
The board have them you need. I mean, they've been approved through the budget, the capital, you will-
Nope. We just make sure to, we just make sure to include them, um, given that it's, uh, you know, part of, um, part of capital and we want to make sure it's there. But that concludes the, uh, the capital improvement plan.
Again, this is not for, um, vote tonight, um, you know, but it's good information to have. We will return. It's time for our warrant approvals to have a conversation about it again. And by that time we'll have, uh, input from the capital outlay. The outlay committee meets, um, I think August the nineteenth, and I believe they're also planning an early September meeting. So that kind of dovetails well into our first meeting in September. We'll, we'll be able to give a, a pretty good update at that point in time from Outlay to the board very well. Thank you, Mr. Mizuka.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Um, the next item is changes to the capital improvement policy. Let me, uh, talk you through this one. So, you have, um, a, uh, in your packet, the, the financial management policy for capital improvement plan as we sit here today, as it was approved by the, um, school committee, the board of selectmen and the finance commission, oh, probably two thousand and eighteen or thereabouts. Um, as the board recalls, all financial policies require the approval of all three boards. So capital outlay, uh, committee last year, realizing that, that Outlay is not the, um, that doesn't have the authority to approve financial policies, did have a discussion about, from their perspective, what kind of things might be, uh, more beneficial if the policy were to be, um, updated and edited. So what you have in the second page, uh, is a draft, was from two thousand and twenty-three. The Outlay Committee did look at this. Um, what you have is outlined in yellow are the specific changes to the policy. Again, for your review and, and discussion, um, we can return to, to have more consideration of it. But in, in essence, um, just very quickly, the committee, Outlay Committee, thought that the policy could be enhanced with language that was more specific to the role of the finance commission, the board of selectmen, and as well as the school committee, uh, regarding those projects that are, that are coming before school and the board of selectmen, as well as the finance commission, which actually makes the formal recommendation to the town meeting. Um, uh, the, um, first paragraph, um, under section policy replaces the previous one. Uh, just, uh, a couple of verbiage changes there regarding, um, some of the language from the old policy, uh, referring to necessary capital expenditures where the, the board, the committee thought that proposed capital expenditure was a, a better way of describing that role. The second page of the revisions in yellow, um, uh, this is information you, we did have occasion, uh, Outlay did have a, a, a project or two recently where uh, part of the funding sources happened to come from unfinished policy, uh, projects from previous years. And the committee felt that perhaps it was wise to put that in writing, that, that, that could be, um, a consideration that Outlay could get information. And Mike, Mr. Rosen's been very good about keeping the board update in terms of those projects that are undergoing, previously approved projects that are undergoing substantial change, um, in, 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 in their timeline and in, in their funding source, whether they need more money or they're using less or a project has been delayed. That does have implications for that particular project, particularly its funding source being available perhaps, particularly if it's a project that's being canceled to be applied to the funding source for a future project. Um, we added utility rates under, um, um, you know, the paragraph two of the second page in terms of, um, other capital investment funds may come from free cash or other funds, free cash being a primary source for funding. Utility rates we thought should be added since many of our projects are, are water related. And this is something we've been doing very well. We thought we should call it out in the policy in that there are, um, as Mr. Mizuka refers to rolling stock items, the police vehicles, the things that we have been moving out of the capital, um, outlay process, not so much the process, but out of the funding mechanisms from capital outlay to those projects, and the equipment rather, that can be paid for within the operating budget. We've done good work in that area. We thought that should be called out in the policy. Um, there was an, an idea here, um, in terms of, uh, consideration, uh, again, on funding sources, uh, a notation here of the role of the, uh, finance division, the director of accounting, um, to provide information regarding our, you know, whether it's the debt analysis that Mr. Plasko was referring to or our free cash, uh, available, available. The criteria, um, the committee felt the criteria from the old policy was, wasn't, uh, very strong. Um, and we, we updated the, the criteria to reflect some more of the best practice information that we have available to us from a couple of the municipalities. This particular criteria comes from a couple of different, I think Arlington being one of them. And finally, uh, on the last page, it's just, uh, some definitions in terms of providing, uh, a definition regarding what exactly is a, a capital project. And we further define that there, um, as well as, um, providing some, uh, cost thresholds, uh, and useful life information that the previous policy didn't really strongly reference. So, um, I will stop talking there, but I did, just wanted to give an overview, um, of the policy. Policies again are the purview of the three boards. Um, I believe FinCom has, has, has approved the policy as is. School committee is scheduled to look at it and at this point my thought would be to just give it to the board this evening for your considerations, um, and input. We can talk about it tonight or if the board would rather, um, you know, quote, dwell on it further, we can, we can revisit the issue at a later date in the fall. I'll stop and open it up for questions. Mr. Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this is really good work. I, I really, um, I think it's a, it's a big improvement. You know, some of the things from the old management policy, especially with the criteria for, for projects, you know, things like, I think the old ones said, uh, projects that will foster the town's economic vitality, which is nice, but it's not really specific about anything. So I really do think all of the new criteria are pretty specific, um, and, and improvement of the past. One question I had, and again, maybe we, maybe we talk about it at a later date if, if we have some time to, to tweak this. But it seems like within the new criteria, there's not, um, a specific mention of projects that, um, would sort of be the, the first piece of a larger project. I think it's, you know, like a study.
Phase or something.
Yeah. So I don't know if that's something that we can include some language or if it's not necessarily part of this, the criteria of the new policy, but it is mentioned in the previous policy and-
Right.
Just, you know, if we spend half a million bucks on a traffic light study, but then we don't do the traffic lights install or something, but-
Right.
I'm, that's, that's just kind of a small thing, but, uh, overall I appreciate the work that went into this. I think it's a really strong document.
So what you're referring to is more specific information regarding, you know, the criteria around or the, 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 the use of design projects going first before we do construction?
Yeah, and sort of where that sits in, in how it's weighted to, for a decision for a project to come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Good insights. Mr. Plasko?
Yeah, um, my apologies actually to you. You've done this work in your committee and you've brought this actually to our attention months ago. And I finished one homework assignment from you and was about to start this one when, uh, saw that was on this week's agenda, so I kind of actually held off. But I would like time to,
Yeah.
uh, you know, bring back for further discussion and maybe, uh, changes or discuss, points of discussion on, uh, what you've handed out. And one thing that just hit me now, didn't even, um, affect me when I read it, but when you just said it, a lesser misunderstanding, you said, Mr. Rosen does a good job of keeping the committee updated on how projects are going and everything.
Mm-hmm.
What's that have to do with the capital outlay committee? They're not in charge of any projects. They make recommendations at town meeting and, and the rest of us about what needs to get done and how to fund them. Town meeting votes, and I brought this up about town meeting passed, the vote should be clear. Who's responsible for those projects? Most of them tend to be general government. So following those projects that way and making that report is absolutely essential. But it probably should be coming here and/or to the school committee or whatever group is actually responsible for those projects. Cause ultimately, let's say there's a change in one of those and gee, there's a problem and it looks like they're going to have to come back and ask for more money. That really has nothing to do with the capital outlay committee. You know, at that point, yeah.
The, um, so two, two things. One, we can start CCing the board and the school committee on-
That paragraph's good. It should happen, but I don't know that it should happen with the capital outlay committee.
Yeah, I think, just, just on the capital outlay, that's a really good point. I think that, that, Mr. Mizuka, I think you can probably address how we can go forward, but I think in terms of the outlay, I think the outlay committee realizes that is not their purview. I think the idea of the update is basically a courtesy to the outlays since they are the ones that have done a lot of the footwork in the previous plan and that they had a desire to, since we've invested the time and effort by the outlay committee to recommend a plan, um, this is just a, a narrative summary that Mr. Rosen, uh, will bring to the committee occasionally, which is very easily-
We can CC the board and others on it.
And I more than appreciate that and endorse it. I always say, trying to say here as blunt as I can, belongs here. I want to see these things as well.
Good point. All right. So any other comments? We'll, um, well, I guess I'll ask the committee to, you know, anything else that you have in terms of, um, thoughts on the policy to, to relay them to me and we will, uh, schedule, um, a further discussion of the policy. I anticipate that we may have some specific language that we might want to consider recommending to the, um, to the policy that we would have to then bring forward to our other, um, boards that are also part of the process for approval of financial policies. But I thank you for your, your insights and your input.
Well, thank you for your work on this.
All right. Um, now we're moving on to four point eight, Norwood Water Bond, MWRA. Alex Haggerty, Town Treasurer and Collector submitting the water bond for signature of the board.
Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Plasko?
Um, we do have a technical vote that the treasurer and the bond council provides. Um, in the past, it's work that we've made the motion that, uh, this motion as it appears, um, be in our minutes and, right, just read the important parts for the public. And that would be that we're approving a sale of six hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars in water bonds for the town of Norwood due to July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, and that there would be, um, ten equal payments, um, payable with, without interest. And they will again on August fifteenth for fif- for fifteen, excuse me, for the year's principal amount at, um, starting in twenty twenty-five, including through to the year twenty thirty-four. And each year is the same amount of sixty-two thousand, nine hundred dollars. And so I guess the motion is spread across all the records of our minutes. Uh, this vote as it appears provided by the treasurer and that we approve said vote.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Plasko. Um, do I have a second on the, uh, motion made by Mr. Plasko?
Second.
Mr. Sad seconds. Um, anything further on the motion? Mr. Mizuka?
As you know, Mr. Donnelly, clarification, this is the bond that was approved, uh, at town meeting last year. So this is not new money or new borrowing. It's just the paperwork for what was already approved.
Uh, so this has been, uh, motioned and seconded, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, unanimous. Thank you, uh, Mr. Plasko for putting forth the motion. Uh, four point nine, this is election day signage. Norwood League of Women Voters is submitting a request to place six sandwich board signs at the following locations. at the following locations. Coakley Middle School entrance, The Lennox Avenue in Pleasant Street, Dean and Napont Street, Winter and Prospect Streets, Walpo and Chapel Street, and Walnut and Washington Street. The signs would be placed approximately two weeks prior to the state primary on September the 3rd, and the state election on November the 5th. Do I have a motion?
I approve.
Seconded by Mr. Lane, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
One abstention.
One, four to, four, yes, one abstention. Thank you, Ms. Groh. This is 4.10, it's a one-day liquor license, or permit rather, Hometown Arcade, submitting a request for a one-day liquor permit to be used for a John Wick pinball stern army launch party on Saturday, August the 10th, 2024, from 2:00 p.m. until 11:00 p.m. at Hometown Arcade, 61 Anticott Street, with approximately 100 guests expected.
Make a motion to approve.
Mr. Lane, do I have a second? Ms. Groh? On the motion for this one-day liquor permit, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? unanimous. 4.11, car wash. Friends of the Norwood Boys Soccer submitting a request to hold a car wash on Saturday, September the 21st, 2024, from 9:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. in a municipal parking lot. Do I have a motion? Mr. Lane, motions?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Sad seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Five, nothing. 4.12, car wash. Norwood varsity golf team submitting a request to hold a car wash on Saturday, August the 21st, 2024, 9:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. in a municipal parking lot. This request was originally approved on July 9th for a car wash on July 13th, but due to inclement weather, it was necessary to cancel, so they have a new date. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
And seconded by Mr. Lane, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carry. Five, nothing. 4.13, car wash. Norwood Girls Volleyball Team submitting a request to hold a car wash on Saturday, August the 24th, 2024, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in the municipal parking lot. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Seconded, Mr. Sad, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No. Capital five, nothing. So I agree from those last several that there's going to be lots of opportunity over the summer for one to get your car washed. Take advantage of it. 4.14, this is a park use request for N Dean Park, submitting a request to hold a small wedding ceremony at N Dean Park near the pond with approximately 20 guests on Wednesday, July the 31st, 2024, from 5:00 p.m. until 6:00 p.m. Mr. Plasko.
I don't know if it's made, they've been made aware, or we assume they're, they're aware since they put it, just put in this application, that it's very, not impossible, but difficult to get there? And the other question is, typically, we've been reserving requests, although I think the exception is weddings, like on the common, but otherwise, did it be someone local? This application from Hawaii?
Yeah, that's the address I saw.
That's the one from Norwood involved.
I must have saw the golden fish in there.
We're becoming almost world famous, I guess.
If it was more than a wedding, I'd be, maybe that's a small speech.
Yeah, I just think we're great, people want to get mad at you. There you go.
Your question regarding, does the applicant know the status of the site? Ms. Woodward, I believe, we've, you and I had that conversation, and they are aware.
Okay.
I had not considered the applicant's address, but I don't know what the local connection is, but.
And as I said, on the common, we looked the other way to that point on weddings, on bandstand, and it's basically the same thing.
Yeah, we did a wedding in Memorial Hall.
They're not looking for a cookout, they're not looking for, you know.
Yeah.
We did a wedding in Memorial Hall a year or two ago, and I don't think they were going to organize this.
I just thought it was, wanted to make sure I was reading that correctly.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sad. Ms. Woodward.
The parents of one of the people getting married, that's what they.
There's no connection.
Oh, thank you.
They actually, they, the Dunyan Target, they moved to Hawaii, but one of the people getting married has no connection.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
He didn't just kind of throw a dart at the globe, come up with the location. Very well, with that information, Mr. Sad.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Lane. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carry. Next, banner placement. Norwood Craft Affairs submitting a request to place the craft affair banner on poles on Washington Street between Vernon and Day Street from October the 1st through October the 19th, to promote the craft affair on October the 19th at Norwood High School. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Ms. Groh makes the motion. Mr. saying, Ms. Lane, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carry, five, nothing. 4.16, this is banner placement. Department of Public Works submitting a request to place a banner on the poles at Washington Street between Vernon and Day Street from Monday, September the 9th, 2024, through Monday, September the 23rd, 2024, to advertise Household Hazardous Waste/Recycling Day, to be held on September the 21st, 2024. Pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Ms. Lane, seconded by Ms. Groh. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. 4.17, road race request to reschedule. Cedar Samaritan Care submitting a request to hold a road race on Sunday, September the 22nd, 2024, from 12:00 p.m. until 3:00 p.m. The race will begin in Norwood High School, follow along Nickel Street to Westover Parkway, Albemarle, Albemarle Road and end of the high school. Approximately 100 to 200 participants are expected. This request was originally approved by the board at the meeting of July the 9th, and they're looking to reschedule it. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
And seconded by Mr. Sad. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. All right. Onto agenda number five, memoranda.
Motion to file.
Mr. Plasko makes the motion. Ms. Lane, I'll take you as a second.
Sounds good.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Five, nothing, carry. And that leads us to managers' update. Mr. Mizuka.
I believe nothing this evening, Mr. Chairman. I took up enough of your time earlier.
Want to get out of here.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go this way first, how about that? Yeah, because I have to. Ms. Groh.
It figures you think the night that I actually didn't have anything.
Well, in fact.
We get out here earlier.
Well, yeah, okay.
But I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Plasko.
Pass, please.
Mr. Sad.
Thank you.
Or Ms. Lane, rather.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just very quickly, I just wanted to say thank you to WT Rich, the construction company building the new middle school. We, with the parking lot work being done this summer to, while the kids are not in school, it made for a pretty long trek if you were going to a Little League game, of which I have gone to many, but particularly with some of the elderly people that may, you know, it's a long walk, and, long story short, WT Rich helped offset the cost of a golf cart, like one of the really nice ones with, you know, the several seats, and it's been really helpful bringing people back and forth to the parking, the temporary parking and the stands to watch games, so just, they were very generous and helped us out there, so I just want to say thank you, remember.
Excellent. Maybe the golf cart could be available to Mr. Plasko when Emmett runs out of energy and needs a ride to the car.
He never runs out of energy. Thanks, thank you. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sad.
Couple things. I did get a note and a call from Judith Howard about pumping station. I don't know anything about it and what's down there.
Something they don't know.
Yeah, so I'm going to just take a visit down to see how much land's down there and how much is useless and not useless.
Just on that point, I'll be sending out an email with a date for a tour of the ability. It's a, it's a controlled facility, you can't just go down there.
Oh, that's okay.
We're going to schedule a tour, though, I'll let you know the date and time in the next day or two.
And then Norwood Hospital, I know there's a lot of ground swelling, but any news from the governor, what she's decided to get back to us on? Nothing. Take that, it's right there. Little League champs, I'm not sure if your son was involved with that, or anybody of friends, but congratulations to the 10, 11-year-olds.
It's the Tami's out.
Yep, and to the Legion, Coach Smudge, good luck in the playoffs. And one more thing, I mentioned it last week, the people on, Mr. Manager, on Napont Street with Cherrywood and the next street down, the light sequence is long to get out of there. I've been there a couple times in there, just seeing if they could tweak a little bit.
Yeah, we'll take a look. I mean, the, the construction that's going on in Napont Street's making it, it's always challenging. It's more so with that construction. I've gotten stuck in it a couple times myself in the last few weeks.
And that road, that road's a mess, so that's going to be topless. But other than that, that's it, Mr. Chairman, and.
Thank you, Mr. Sad.
Thank you.
All right. I'll be brief as well, just a couple of thank yous. First of all, over the weekend, it's been a hot summer here, but I was very pleased to hear that a couple of volunteers over the weekend did do trail maintenance at the Meadow Street Trail, so want to thank those volunteers for doing that, led by Mr. Greeley on Saturday, and I think a little more work over the weekend after that. Also, I participated on Sunday morning at the Community Food Forest, was to thank Carly Rockland from the Conservation Commission, and Alex Jones from the Community Development and Planning Department, who coordinated a, a group weeding effort at the food forest. So if you go by the food forest, you'll notice that it's not completely, but certainly substantially fewer weeds invading the space where the trees are, and most of us were able to avoid being infected by poison ivy, which is all over the place up there. I also want to make a note that in August, the plan for the board is to meet one time, at this point, on August the 13th, and I wanted to just make that, acknowledge that this evening, because those folks who are anticipating any, any late summer or early September activities that need our approval, they're wise to get their paperwork into Ms. Woodward in, in time for the August 13th meeting. Otherwise, I have nothing else to add, and with that, I will make, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So?
Ms. Groh, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Good night, everyone.